Welcome to a special edition of Cohasset Common. I'm Cohasset Town Manager Chris Senior, and today we'll be talking about the Special Town Meeting Warrant, which by now you should have in your mailbox. And it looks just like this. So it's about a 20-page packet that's chock full of information, including 11 articles that will be discussed and debated at Special Town Meeting, which is Monday, December 13th, at 7:00 PM at the gym at the high school. And we're going to be walking through it with a panel that we've pulled together today in two parts. The first, we're going to walk through the entire warrant. And with me for that is Don Pyatt, the town's finance director, Carrie Thompson, the chair of the Select Board, and Meg Wheeler, the secretary of the advisory committee. So thank you all for joining us.
Happy to be here.
So what we're going to do is we're going to walk through the warrant, and the first three articles will have to do with finance.
Yep.
I'm going to turn to my right, and we're going to start with Don Pyatt. So the first article, our amendments to the FY22 operating budget, and we sometimes do these for tweaks, and I'll have Don explain what these are.
Yeah, so we have four line items within Article One. The first three relate to adjusted debt payments. Essentially, what happened is the town issued long-term debt in June, which was factored into our annual budget cycle at that point. So the first one, Title V, relates to our Title V program that we have in town. We permanently financed $150,000, and that is about $8,300 for fiscal '22. This will be paid over, I believe, a 10-year period by the homeowners who participated in this program. The second amount, $459,000, is being funded from capital stabilization fund. This has been factored into their annual forecast for a number of years. This is, again, we issued debt in June for these projects. These were all appropriated and approved in prior years, including here is the Bound Brook project, town hall financing for design, Border Street Bridge, ambulance, and a few other things.
So the key is that we had planned for this, but the exact amounts weren't set until after September, and that's what we're doing now.
Right. We essentially had to get to a point of over a million dollars in total projects for the bond market to really jump on this, which is what happened in June. And we'll be paying this over a five-year term as well. And the last one, for $101,000, relates to our road betterment project. A number of years ago, we approved this project for Cedar Acres, and it just has to do with the timing of when we were able to approve and then pay off the ban in fiscal '22. And the homeowners will be paying this off over a 10-year period if they haven't done so already. Part of the betterment, you can either pay over the 10-year period that we're offering, or some people pay it upfront, or when you sell your home. And then the last item, peg access. We appropriate monies that we receive from Verizon and Comcast twice a year at each of our town meetings. And through today, that balance was $118,000, $326. 118, 326.
Okay. 118, 326. That's what people will see in the warrant. So when you see the motion packet at home, everybody, that this number will change, and you can see it was TBD because we were still waiting for the final, the second quarter payment to come in from the cable companies.
Yes, exactly.
And again, both boards voted unanimously to support this.
Yes, we did. And it's been a really hard couple of years fiscally for a lot of towns and cities, but I'm really proud of Cohasset for remaining stable and strong the whole time.
Okay. So that's Article One, the amendments to the operating budget. Article Two is something we have on. We don't always have it. Unfortunately, we've had, the pandemic did cause a little bit of challenge, more on the private side of billing is properly. And this was, Don, one set of unpaid bills from the sewer department for F.R. Mahoney, which I believe to do with grinder pump maintenance.
Grinder pump maintenance, number of service calls that were not captured or reported to the sewer department, it sounds like. F.R. Mahoney was just recently acquired too by a larger company. So this was, these came up as a result of the new company going through their new accounting system, taking over the prior files. So it just kind of came up as a part of their housekeeping. And luckily, grinder pumps are now on the resident.
Yes.
So there's no more going through the sewer department for service calls or anything like that. So we shouldn't have this issue in the future.
So just this one unpaid bill, sewer department, again, both boards recommended by unanimous votes, so this should be a simple one. That does need a lot, a very large majority to pay on a paid bill, but it is a due bill. The third article is something that's also on a regular warrant, stabilization funds. And this time, Don, we're just putting money into one stabilization fund.
Correct. We're putting $350,000 into our OPEC trust fund, our stabilization fund. This brings our FY22 contribution to $530,450, bringing the balance up to approximately $6.1 million. Back in January of 2020, the Select Board approved a funding policy for other post-employment benefits, funding the trust. This is our year three commitment of that policy. So we've just completed our third year of continued efforts of funding this liability.
Okay. And again, I think, you know, both boards supported this unanimously, and it's been a long-term policy of the Select Board. The advisory committee voted for this, and the post-employment benefit committee did.
And thank you, special shout out to the committee and for everyone that's done work on this issue throughout the years. It's obviously something that we're continually concerned about and working on.
And again, this is meeting the commitments. Every year, we go up a little bit, and this meets our commitment for this year. So it's not sad we put away $6.1 million, so it's chipping away, and we actually have a whole pathway to find it, which is great. So that's the first three articles. Well, we've now done the first three articles, which are all finance, and now we'll kind of move to Article Four, which is also finance, but it's for something we call one-time costs. And there are six projects, I'm sorry, I can't even count. There are five projects in here. Let me try that one more time. So now that we've done the first three articles of the warrant, which are all directly finance-related, we're going to go to our fourth, which is where we actually spend a little free cash, which is something that the town develops over the course of the year. It's a little bit like a surplus, basically. And the financial policies say what we should do is spend on one-time items, things that we should, you know, capital items or projects or things that are one-time expenses. And what we have are five projects that were well-vetted, and I'll walk through them. And again, we have, we have our members of our advisory, the chair and-
These are exciting projects.
Very exciting. So I will start with the first one. So the town hall project, I think as everyone knows, has been going along for a good while. There's a current committee. At the last town meeting, $750,000 was funded to put this all the way through bid, and that is ongoing. What this does is this allocates $750,000 to put aside for the project, to put it aside for a prepay. So when this gets to town meeting in the spring with, hopefully, a good bid, there's money that's already set aside. So again, this is something that the Select Board and the advisory committee have really stressed, being fiscally prudent, putting money aside. And it's kind of like putting down, putting ahead of down payment, because you know the expense is coming, and this is just putting it down.
And this is a critical project for our town. We're here in our lovely senior center right now because we don't even have the spaces in town hall to do filming like this. And everyone who's been in town hall understands why it's a critical project. I think the town, you know, really needs to value its public buildings, and I'm really proud of all the work the town hall project's done. I think the plans that we just saw at a recent Select Board meeting are looking really fantastic and promising, and I'm hoping that we can get this done as a town. I know it's been a long time coming, but it's really critical.
Yeah, and I would say too, you know, one of the advisory committee's roles is to advise the Select Board on big projects like this and on our budget, and we have had a lot of robust conversations about the town hall project. We are very, very aware of the need for it to be a financially stable project, something that is supporting our town for many years to come and not hindering it. So we've already had a lot of conversations, a lot of reviews of financials so far, and I know we'll have many more to come as the project gets underway.
And the financials are doable right now, and they're fiscally conservative still. And if we wait on this any longer or put this off any more years, it's going to be a real financial liability for the town, I think.
So again, this is $750,000. It goes into, it just gets set aside. It's not going to be spent, but it's set aside as a down payment to the eventual project. The second is actually a pro act, because the school facilities committee was just appointed.
Yes, another exciting new committee.
And this $250,000 will be available to them as they begin the process. And this is going to be a multi-year process of assessing the school facilities and making determinations as to what the best next steps are. And this $250,000 will put aside money to allow them to bring in some consultants, do some building analysis, which is going to start actually quite soon. This is, as we film this, it's just around Thanksgiving. And when this goes in front of town meeting, we hope to have a consultant, at least the process engaged, to do some building assessments, because it's a very long process we won't go into today.
Right.
To work with the state on getting funding and to do a whole assessment of the building. So this is a quarter million dollar, again, it's putting money aside for the next six, 12 months.
But a lot of citizens and residents agree that we need to be proactive with all of our public buildings, all of our town buildings, including our schools. And this new committee has so much talent on it. Thank you to all of our wonderful members of this committee. I think that there's a lot of potential with it, but it's being proactive and forward-thinking in terms of what we need to be doing with our schools in the future.
Well, and I think as Carrie has stated, when we delay on these big decisions, it does cost us money.
Yeah.
We've seen that with the town hall. I think we're going to see that with the schools.
Yeah.
And so a committee like this is really critical, and I think any family in town with school-aged children feels firsthand the needs of our schools. And so I'm really excited that the advisory committee is supporting this, and hopefully everyone at Special Town Meeting does as well.
Okay. The third project is consulting services for a zoning study. Now, one of the things was identifying the master plan and discussed at length at a joint meeting the Select Board had on November 9th with both the planning board, the zoning working group, the master plan implementation committee, and the zoning-
It was a big meeting.
It was a big meeting, in this very building, actually, downstairs. The concept of having a comprehensive zone review of the town, which hasn't been done in many years, came up. And this is, again, this is a first payment towards that study, $75,000. And again, at both boards, I think, not just both boards, but across the board, this being unanimous support for this.
Yeah, and I'm really proud of the town because we are finally tackling a lot of these issues that have been put off for a while because they are difficult and they're nuanced and they're complicated and they take a lot of work, but we have to address this as well. And again, I'm proud that we have so much support with all of the boards and committees in town.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, just the incredible committees have done a lot of work on this, and thank you to all of them. And I'm excited that the advisory committee is supporting this.
Okay. The next two are a little more traditional, simpler projects. One is actually a little complicated, and so cemetery records upgrade. The town has a couple of active cemeteries and a couple of historic ones that are maintained. We really need to get the records of the 21st century, which means digitizing them, and they're not. So this will take us a first step towards that. The town did do a very extensive record management in town hall over the last couple of years. A tremendous amount of work was done, and this was identified as an area that needed to be addressed as a next step, and it's the next step. So this is $18,000 to get some of those cemetery records upgraded, and then $21,000 for new voting booths, as I think everyone knows-
And we're getting a new precinct.
Exactly. So we're going to go from two to three precincts. Now, everyone's going to still vote at town hall, it's going to be one place, but we need new voting areas because there's going to be a third precinct, and this will pay for those booths and the additional equipment needed to accommodate that third precinct.
Mm-hmm.
And those are both, again, the whole package was supported by both boards. So those are the five projects, and for more information, you can go to the town website. Want to learn more about the zoning study, you can watch on YouTube the joint meeting that took place on November 9th. So I think you'll learn everything you want to know about that. Article Five, capital improvements. We often, we sometimes have capital improvements, and there's two here on this warrant. One is replacement of defibrillators. And, you know, as I think most people realize, the fire department carries them, the police department carries them, and we have some in public works as well, including also town buildings. And we learned that if we replace them by December 31st, we get a rebate on everyone we return.
Got to get in on that rebate.
And I think it's at least $7,000. So it's real money that we're saving.
Yeah.
So rather than wait till the spring, it makes sense to do it now. So, and that was supported unanimously by every board. And the other is an extension, so the Elm Street Waterman, as I think anyone who drives that place out knows, that work is beginning. This is a little extension piece that they decided to get done that will link up to down margin, up towards Atlantic. There was one little additional segment that they wanted to replace, $150,000, which will come out of water-retainer earnings to take care of that. So those are two projects. Again, everyone's supporting unanimously, and I think they're putting fairly simple out on their face. So Article Six and Article Seven go into a little more depth in a few minutes with our special panelists.
Yes.
But I will say that, you know, that both committees did discuss this heavily.
Yes.
Updates to the zoning code are something the town's been talking about since the master plan was done. There's been a lot of great work done, and both of these articles, after some good, robust conversation, were supported by both boards.
Yes. And the zoning changes are really critical. As the town grows, as times change, it's really important that we address this. Towns really should be thinking about zoning every decade, and we've put ours off for a few decades now. So I think that these changes are a long time coming, and there's a lot of potential here to have a positive impact for everyone in town.
And there, again, I think one of the things that came up is that there is a timing on some of these.
Yeah.
There's bigger, bigger questions that have to be tackled, but these are some that I think everyone felt needed to be done sooner than.
Mm-hmm.
And again, the first one is changes to residential zoning definitions, and there's a number of definitional updates.
Yeah.
We'll talk about those more in depth in a second. And number seven is ledge protection. There was already a ledge protection update passed in a prior town meeting, and this kind of continues that work. And again, I think both boards supported them unanimously, and again, we'll talk more in depth about them.
And we know how important our ledge is and how special it is and how most towns don't have to deal with something like ledge protection, but it's critical to maintaining the beauty of our town and thinking about future development and buildings. So this is something that we have a lot of support on and that people are talking about frequently.
Okay. So that's, we'll get, you'll hear more about those both in just a moment. So Article Eight, Community Preservation Committee. We have a couple of projects and an extension on this one. The projects, again, it looks like it's a little bit bigger, but it's really only $18,000. The extra zero is a mistake, so don't worry, we're not spending $180,000. Those are for stairs. Anyone who comes to Lincoln Field or down Bancroft knows there's a little set of wooden stairs. It was an Eagle project a number of years ago. Unfortunately, wooden stairs have eroded, they have to be replaced. So this will put concrete stairs in there to make them safe and permanent for people who come and go via all on their field. The other is to buy a new water wheelchair. So right now, anyone-
This is exciting.
Yeah, anyone who's a sandy beach knows that there's a little path to get a wheelchair down the water, but this actually will allow someone who's disabled to get into the water. And again, it's an exciting thing, it'll get, it'll have it, hopefully, available for the spring, or for the summer, I should say. And that was a big conversation.
It's a huge accessibility improvement, and we are trying to make our facilities and our beaches more accessible. So this is exciting, and we've gotten overwhelming support and feedback about this.
And the last is just to extend some funds for the bathhouse. Sandy Beach renovated their bathhouse, and there's a little bit more, a little less than $3,500 left. So this allows them an additional year to spend that money on some of the bathhouses if they have anything to wrap up. So those are the, again, everyone supported those unanimously, that's the CPC. Article Nine is simple, and, but it can seem very complex, very legally worded.
Right.
Very simply, the complex on, the Barnes Field complex around Main Street, right behind the pool, right next to the pool, has been used for Little League for a long time. The town has owned that property for many years, and the Little League has managed it for many years. Due to ongoing conversations about some upgrades and some changes to those uses, it's become clear that there's no formal agreements. There's been a lot of-
Nothing was ever in writing.
Yes, exactly. I mean, no one's doing anything properly. It just, as this often happens in small towns, things are done, kind of on a handshake, and maybe a vote at the Select Board without it ever being written down. So what this does is this formally gives the Select Board, it cleans up any ambiguity, and there's most certainly ambiguity as to what the land was, the town's owned that land for at least 100 years, and it was unlikely to be acquired for baseball use. And what this does is it formally grants the Select Board the ability to go into a lease, again, whether it's most likely for baseball uses going forward with a local organization. And it doesn't mandate it, but it gives the board the power. And so again, there was a lot of conversation, and this just opens up a clear path just to be able to put things in writing, to make sure that everyone is, you know, that everything's being done cleanly and safely and protectively.
And our council's been really helpful on this. Again, the Select Board has a role of being the stewards of our public land and our public buildings, and we very much care about that. And what I like about this is that it protects us as a town, and it also protects whoever is leasing on the other side, right? So this is just modernizing our leases and legal agreements in a way that's going to help all parties and all sides.
Yeah, and so, again, it looks very legally, and it is, directed by council, but it really simply just clarifies the Select Board's existing authority over leasing and field use. So it's a good step just to clean up. So that's really, I hate to call it housekeeping, but it's a little bit like housekeeping.
Yeah.
Which is exactly what Article Ten is, by the way.
Correct.
It's another big project. That said, the park grabbing boat ramp, for anyone who's used it, the town's only public boat ramp, we got a grant to rebuild it, that's actually the-
Very exciting.
The bids are being wrapped, and we're hoping to have some progress done on that this winter. That said, it turns out that the ramp is actually a little bit on the neighboring marina property, and has been probably for a long time, probably forever. And they've actually crossed town land for access to their marina for a long time. So what this does is it swaps, and if you, if actually, if you look at the warrant, there's actually an appendix, appendix thing which shows a map, and there are little slivers of land. And what this does is it allows the Select Board to formally, you know, give an easement and accept an easement. They'll just formalize what's already there. So it really does clean up things. And again, I think there's some vegetation, I think it's in some bushes that the marina maintains. No one's looking to change anything. This just formalizes that the town owns a piece, the marina owns a piece, and we're allowing each other to use it. So again, it's, this came up because we're doing work on the ramp, so a little bit like the field lease. When you dig a little bit, you find out things weren't quite as dotted i's and crossed t's, and in 2021, you're going to have to do that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's that one. Again, everyone supported that, you know. And Article 11 is a citizen petition, which is a sense of the meeting. And as such, neither the Select Board nor the advisory committee actually voted on this, because there's really no action. Town meeting's not being asked to take an action but to express an opinion. So it's there, and I think it's clear, and that's the warrant, 11 articles. So, any final words?
No, just thank you to everyone who watches us and shows up at Special Town Meeting. It's an important part of our process here in town, and thank you to my fellow committee members. It's been an honor as always to serve.
And remember, town meeting is the purest form of democracy. We weren't able to have Special Town Meeting last year because of COVID, and it's really going to be great to be back in the gym, doing the work of the town, and I'm very excited. I'm hoping we'll have a pretty quick, quick meeting. So hope to see everyone there. Please show up December 13th.
Yep, Special Town Meeting, Monday, December 13th. Masks will be required, so please don't forget. That'll be in the gym, so bring your mask, have it ready.
Mm-hmm.
Be creative, be wearing your Cohasset mask, whatever you want. Well, we'll have extra masks available for those who need them, but again, it'll be mask required in the gym, 7:00 PM, Monday, December 13th. And in just a moment, we'll be talking zoning.
See everyone there.
And thank you to Meg Wheeler, Carrie Thompson, and Don Pyatt for their time, and this preview of Special Town Meeting.
Great.
Welcome back to the special edition of Cohasset Common, and on this part of the panel, talking about Special Town Meeting 2021, I think we have to my left Katie Dugan, the chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, among many other hats she wears. And we have Lauren Lynn, the town director of planning. To my right, Select Board Chair Carrie Thompson. And we're going to take a little more in-depth look at Articles Six and Seven. And just so people know, in the warrant, our Appendix A and B have more information on both Articles Six and Seven. So please, when you look at the warrant, make sure you jump to the end piece for Articles Six and Seven, because there's great information in there and a good description of what these are both about. And let's start, Lauren, with Article Six, which is changes to the zoning definitions.
Certainly, thank you, and thank you for having me today. I'm going to give a little bit of background on process and procedure as to how these articles came to appear in the Special Town Meeting warrant, and then I'm going to turn it over to Katie Dugan from the Master Plan Implementation Committee to give you some more detail about those articles. So the first article that you'll see is changes to residential zoning definitions. The intent of this article, just quickly, is to integrate some modifications to existing definitions, as well as add some new definitions that don't currently exist in the Cohasset zoning bylaws. And these zoning modifications are to provide more tools in the toolkit for zoning enforcement for our building inspector as he, you know, enforces land use permitting board decisions. So we'll see, we'll get into more detail about that process in a moment, but this intends to provide some more context and information in our zoning bylaws that will be consistent with state law. The process that happened with this is that our Master Plan Implementation Committee, through its zoning bylaw working group, had been charged several months ago from the Select Board to begin taking a deeper look at zoning bylaw goals and recommendations. That was a result of the 2019 master plan that identified approximately 20 zoning goals and strategies. So this group has really been doing a deep dive and doing a lot of data collection in terms of different aspects and topics in town, and are bringing forth these two particular items for Special Town Meeting with the intent, as you've heard earlier in the show, that we will take a look towards a more, larger zoning rewrite in the coming months. So the changes to zoning residential definitions that you see before you, it went through a public hearing process with the planning board. We took community input, and the planning board voted for in favor, one opposed, to proceed with this article for Special Town Meeting. It did then advance to Select Board and Advisory Committee, which both respectively voted unanimously to recommend this to Special Town Meeting.
Katie, if you want to, if you want to give us more depth?
Excellent. Well, I would definitely encourage people to look at Appendix A for Article Six, because it really is the plain language that gives you an explanation in English instead of legally as to what exactly we're trying to accomplish with these changes. So Lauren mentioned the zoning bylaw working group, and I just wanted to spend a minute and let folks know that this committee was charged by the Select Board in August 2020. It has seven members plus two ex officio members, our building inspector John Holland and also Jen Orem from the planning department. And the seven members are from zoning bylaw, excuse me, the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, Master Plan Implementation Committee, Open Space Planning Board, and we have one member from Select Board. So it is really a broad group, and as Lauren mentioned, the master plan itself has over 20 related zoning recommendations. And so the thought process was that in order to accomplish those specific zoning recommendations related to the master plan, but also a broader, comprehensive zoning redraft that Chris and Carrie referenced before, we needed a group that was focused on this as a task. So the working group has been working since September of 2020, and our job is to bring forward recommendations to the planning board, the Select Board, and the community at large for town meeting vote. And so, as Lauren referenced, one of the things that we worked on was changes to zoning definitions. And one of the core principles that we follow when developing this bylaw change was the opportunity to bring our zoning bylaws more into harmony with state law. And by state law, we mean both statutory state law, but also case law, which has evolved significantly over the last 20 or 30 years since we've updated our zoning bylaws. And in particular, we focused on residential zoning definitions, because that is where a lot of the land use issues that our community is concerned about have been focused. And when we went about our business of figuring out what definitions we thought needed to be updated or added, we focused particularly on what the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court has articulated in terms of four standards that must be met for a new dwelling on a lot. And so the standards that the SGC articulates are being incorporated into our zoning bylaws in order to ensure that a lot meets all residential area dimension requirements, the lots are bought on a qualified way, the lots have adequate frontage, and in particular, have adequate and practical access. So the definitional changes that we're talking about are four revisions to existing definitions, frontage, street slash way, lot, and common driveway. And also six new definitions, parcel, buildable lot, legal frontage, qualified way, non-qualified way, and adequate access. The four revised definitions, you'll see in the article, anything that is new language is underlined, and anything that is being deleted is scored through. But those changes are relatively simple and really just tune up as we have intended to make that, make sure that we have everything in compliance with state and case law. When it comes to the new definitions that are being added, again, we're trying to link things to state statutes, but in some cases, we're actually trying to increase our permitting boards, but also our building inspector and our planning department's ability to enforce and adopt things as it relates to land use that are in line with the goals of the community. that are in line with the goals of the community. So to kind of summarize the rationale for these 10 changes to the definitions are, one, we're trying to ensure that these comply, that our definitions in our bylaws comply with state law. We're looking to provide definitional changes that will help the planning board, the ZBA, the town's building inspector in the review, and the planning board in the review of an approval of building permits, special permits, site plans, and other definitive plans. So again, this is, at the request of these boards, the definitional changes will provide the foundational support they need in order to adjudicate land use, land use issues that are facing Cohasset today. We also were looking to eliminate ambiguity to ensure that undeveloped parcels that are being developed have clearer standards around what is considered a buildable lot under our zoning bylaws. And a lot of that has to do with case law that has happened over the last several decades. And then last but not least, we were looking to address an increasingly important land use issue regarding adequate access and safety on private ways when a new dwelling was being added. And to make sure that our bylaws ensure that the planning board has the ability to regulate common driveways, which already, regulations already exist, but also in addition to that, regulate private way dimensions and instructions if the planning board so deems. And so the combination of all the changes will help ensure that we are able to enforce and put forward this overall goal as it relates to zoning. So with that, I will hand it back to Chris and Lauren to talk about Article seven.
Okay. And again, just to wrap, Article six is changes to residential zoning definitions. Please don't forget our appendix A. There's more information. And if you'd like to watch any of the hearings that took place in front of the planning board, please go to the town's YouTube channel, which you can get to from the town's website. You can watch several hours of the debate. And also the advisory board and select board meetings that review these are also available if people want to watch them before town meeting. And now, so that's Article six. Article seven deals with ledge protection. And Lauren, could you explain that a little bit?
Certainly. Thank you. So Article seven, ledge protection, we, the way we look at this is sort of a part two of the land alteration bylaw that was passed at annual town meeting of 2020. And what this article intends to do is to establish a special permit process for the regulation of exposed ledge face removal for accessory structures. So this is things such as a swimming pool, a shed, something that is not inherently required for a primary structure of a building. So this will add to Article 11 that's already existing and require a series of other parameters to be met for ledge removal under planning board jurisdiction. This was actually, should we continue? Okay, we'll keep going.
That was not told.
Yeah. So Article seven was recommended unanimously by the planning board to move forward for adoption at special town meeting and was also unanimously recommended by the select board and advisory committee. So with that, I'll turn it over to Katie Dugan to give us a little bit more detail about the ledge protection article that's proposed.
I feel like I'm in my grandparents' living room with the clock.
Old school New England.
Exactly. So anyway, Article seven, ledge protection, again, appendix B has kind of plain language for everybody to understand. And as Lauren referenced, the zoning bylaw working group had put forward a land alteration bylaw in the spring, which added to our bylaws a concept of clearing activities, which would regulate for certain types of development in certain lots, restrictions as to the number of trees that, and that could be removed. At the time of those public hearings in the spring, there was quite a bit of community input and requests for us also to address ledge protection. At the time, we felt like we hadn't done enough work on this specific issue so that we wanted to take it back and do further research, which has been our practice. So we made that request to the community and promised to come back. And so this is our revisiting of this topic and our recommendation that we've made, which has gotten unanimous approval from all the boards it's gone to. So the work that we did between special, annual town meeting and now was that we actually went out with the help of some community members and analyzed eight examples of development or potential development where exposed ledge face was at risk. In addition, we worked with town council. And we thoroughly reviewed Mass General Law, section 21, subsection 17, which gives towns the ability to regulate the removal of soil, loam, sand, or gravel in cases where it's not for public use. And then we also, with the help of town council, did a review of two towns that have put in similar exposed ledge face removal bylaws so that we knew that there was a path forward that would, that would pass attorney general review and hopefully scrutiny with the town. And, and what we found through that whole exercise and sort of became the rationale for the proposal, was that we knew that we have the rights to regulate, but we needed to do it in a sensible manner that ensured that landowners still had the ability to develop their parcels as they saw fit for a primary residence and all the associated things that you need for a primary residence, such as a driveway, or utilities, or septic, or sewer. But we also wanted to balance that with the policy issue that exposed ledge is a unique and defining topographical feature of Cohasset. And it's something that those in town would like to protect. And again, we are only looking at regulating exposed ledge. I think it's super important that people understand that exposed ledge is that ledge or rock formation lying above pre-construction grade at any point. So there is no discussion of ledge that is below grade or ledge that you might encounter when you're digging to put in a pool. If it's not visible at the time of construction, it's not being regulated under this proposed bylaw. In terms of why this is important, why this has become a land use issue, one of the things that we discovered or we know as a community that, given rising land values, and expanded development on lots, existing lots, or development of more marginal lots that might have previously been considered undesirable, given topographical changes, that, that equation has flipped as raw land has become more expensive. And as a result, there are developments that are happening in town where exposed ledge is being targeted or removed in order to create dwellings and accessory structures. And so ultimately, this is a policy conversation with the community as to whether we want to protect this or not. We have taken, we've tried to take a balanced view in that, in the bylaw itself, exempt activities for exposed ledge include the construction of a principal dwelling, a garage, a driveway, a sewer system, and utility. So the principal dwelling and all of the attenuate needs of that principal dwelling can have exposed ledge removal. What we are suggesting be regulated is the use specifically for exposed ledge removal for a structure or accessory building. And Lauren already mentioned this, but it's worth repeating, what we mean by a structure or accessory building, which is in the existing definitions or bylaw, is a fence, a shed, a barn, a patio, athletic court, or pool. So things that are not necessarily needed for the principal dwelling, but ultimately become this policy conversation around how far do we let development go in terms of disturbing exposed ledge. And so what's being proposed is an addition of new language in section 11.3, which gives the planning board the authority to hold special permit, special permit process for exposed ledge when the use is related to a structure or accessory building. So with that, I will hand it back to Chris or Lauren to add anything that I missed. But again, this had unanimous support and we hope that the rest of the community will find it balanced and hopefully helpful in terms of protecting community character.
Okay. And this is, as Katie said, it's part two. Town meeting has already approved part one. There's more information in appendix B if somebody wants a deep dive. And again, the hearings on this topic are available on the town's YouTube channel. You can watch the planning board hearing. You can watch the advisory committee discussion. And you can watch the select board conversation. So Article six and Article seven, two more steps in updating the town zoning code. Any final words?
This is really exciting. Thank you to these two women and especially all of the other town staff and board members and volunteers that have worked so hard to make this happen and get this going for special town meeting. I think it's, I think it's exciting that we've made it to this. And I think there's a lot of support for it. So looking forward to the meeting.
Okay. So again, thank you, Katie. Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kerry. Special town meeting, Monday, December 13th. Sullivan Gymnasium at the high school. Masks will be required, so don't forget your masks. So this warrant should be in everybody's home. And please bring it with you. The motions, which actually make the meeting go, they'll be available hopefully the week before the meeting up on the town's website. And the copies will be available, obviously, the night of the meeting. So again, if you want to learn more about any of the articles, you go to the town's website, www.cohassetma.org. And there's a special town meeting page that's set up. In addition, you can go to the town's YouTube channel and watch all the hearings and conversations about not just the zoning articles we just discussed, but all the rest of the articles. The select board looks at all of them, as does the advisory committee. So again, thank you all for your time. We hope this has been helpful. Looking forward to seeing all of you on December 13th. Thank you. Have a good rest of your day.